Okay, you are live.
Okay, we had a. Came out back to the executive session with our active taken.
And I had one more for the public record. The Director of Real Property reminded me and I thank her for doing that. I wanted to bring up on legislation on about December ninth. The state legislature passed a new. Exemption for real property. It's for volunteer firefighters and volunteer ambulance workers. I just wanted the board to know that we have it, we're aware of it. The Director of Real Property has reached out to a number of other counties. The filing. It seems to be the consensus based on the counties that have been contacted. That this is legislation that we would look to move on. After March first of two thousand and twenty-three. So that if the board makes a determination to allow an exemption. For volunteer firefighters and EMS workers. That it would become effective as of March first, two thousand and twenty-four. It can be up to ten percent, but there's a it's not so straightforward in the legislation and it looks like. There's there's some issues that we need to work through and it'll take us a little time to do that, but. Just so you've heard it and you don't think we're not aware of it or we're not taking action on it. We're just waiting until we can. Make that more informed decision and advice to the committee and the board. Thank you so much.
Okay, re communication.
We have Capital District Regional Off-Track Betting Court Financial Reports dated August thirty-one and September thirty, two thousand and twenty-two. And a letter from, I'm sorry, an application for real property tax exemption. For Warren, Washington County IDA project known as seventy-eight eighty Main Street LLC town of Queensberry.
Okay. And we're going to resolutions.
Those resolutions number six seventy-eight through eight oh eight, along with two proclamations were distributed to board of supervisors and posted to the Warren County website. On Tuesday, December thirteenth, meeting the requirements for the rules of the board. The proclamation before you are number fifty impaired driving prevent prevention month and number fifty-one human rights week. There are eight floor resolutions. A motion is needed to bring each to the floor. So for resolution number one, that's waiving the rules for number two.
Motion by supervisor.
Mr. Garrity, I would ask that there be a roll call on the waving of the rules relating to the. The expansion of video conferencing for public meetings.
We're we're not there. We just right now. We're just waving the rules. Get the floor resolutions.
It's just before resolution number one.
You're making that a motion to.
Sure.
Second by Supervisor Driscoll. Any discussion? All those favor. Okay.
For resolution number one is now resolution eight oh nine, motion to bring for resolution number two to the floor. This is. This is for the county attorney's office.
Somebody want to make that a motion. Motion by Supervisor McDevitt. Second by Supervisor Hogan. Discussion. All those favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Close period.
For resolution number two is now resolution eight ten. Motion to bring for resolution number three to the floor. That's waiving the rules for floor resolution number four.
So motion by Supervisor Leggett. We have a second. Second by Supervisor Bramer. Discussion. All those favor.
Hi.
Okay.
For resolution number three is now eight eleven. Motion to bring for resolution four to the floor. This one is amending appropriating funds from the OCT tax reserve to the tourism budget.
Motion by Supervisor Malino, second by Supervisor Dickinson. Discussion. All those in favor. Close period.
For resolution number four is now eight twelve. For resolution number five, this is waiving the rules and this one is to introduce the local law adopting expansion of video conferencing.
Security, I would ask on this waving of the rules, did it be a roll call?
You're making a motion to wave the rules?
Oh, no, I'm making a motion.
We need a motion of wave the rules for Supervisor Brammer. We have a second wave the rules. Supervisor Diamond. Discussion. All those favor. And then we'll put this down for a roll call.
No, you want to waive the rules.
Waiving of the rules.
So hold on just a second.
I'm on a roll call.
Okay, so this is voting on a motion to waive the rules. It's the resolution at before you label this for resolution number five. Mr. Leggett.
No.
Mr. Diamond.
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt.
No.
Ms. Bramer.
Yes.
Mr. Bruno.
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll.
Yes.
Mrs. Frazier. No. Mr. Girasi.
Yes.
Ms. Hogan. Mr. Dickinson.
No.
Mr. Merlino.
No.
Mr. Straugh.
No.
Absent. Mr. McGowan.
No.
Let's see, he's absent. Mr. Brady's absent. Mr. Thomas.
No.
Mr. Conover.
No.
Right. Chairman Garrity.
No.
Okay, so the motion to waive the rules only had two hundred and twenty-one votes in favor, so that fails. Fails. Well, resolution number five is. Okay, so that makes for resolution number six before you is no longer. For resolution number seven, that's waiving the rules to amend the table for a resolution and to amending the table of organization. A motion on that.
Motion by Supervisor Stroud. We have a second. Supervisor Dickinson. Discussion. All those in favor.
Hi.
Close period.
And then motion to bring for resolution number eight to the floor.
Motion to bring number eight, which.
That's the one amending the table of organization.
Motion by Supervisor Dickinson. We have a second. Supervisor Malino. Discussion. All those in favor. Close period. Next.
Discussion on.
Roll call request. Yes.
Yeah, I'm a little confused. Back back there. On. Um. Five. Waiving the rules.
Motion. The motion failed.
The motion failed to waive the rules on that.
Now, my my question was. Is the way the rules was to bring this to the floor, correct?
Yep.
Yes.
So I I misinterpreted that and said, no, am I able to change my vote now?
You can change your vote, but it won't change the outcome.
Change the outcome, but.
All right, I I'd like to cha I I was confused of of what. All right, sorry, but.
All right, now discussion on the rest of the resolutions. Are there any requests?
Chairman, before you can we just get the resolution numbers for floor resolution seven and eight?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Just on the record.
So.
Eight thirteen and eight fourteen.
Eight thirteen. For resolution number seven is eight thirteen. For resolution number eight is going to be eight fourteen.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so somebody had their hand up for discussion on other resolutions. Supervisor Hogan.
Thank you. On seven thirty-five, it's OCT tax allocations. There's over seven hundred thousand dollars. In allocations in that resolution and I'm if if I were able to stay or participate remotely, I would have voted for it. As it is, I have to leave because I had to make an appointment with a plow guy to get me back into my house before there's too much now. So thanks for all of you that voted no on even bringing this to the 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 remote participation. It's incredibly thoughtless. But on seven thirty-five. Seven hundred and some odd thousand dollars in OCT tax going out. I support it because there's important stuff in there like support for the Special Olympics. I just want to point out, as I do every year, that there are twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars going to the communities. Across the northern border of Warren County. That's twenty-two, five hundred going to Johnsburg, Horicon, Chester, and Hague. Out of seven hundred thousand in allocations. We are not going to get advancement of the tourism in those communities if we don't invest in it. Please, please think about that next year. Thank you.
Any other question supervisor Leggett?
Thank you. Just for clarification on seven thirty-five, I do think it's just those three events that are on the front and the rest schedule has already been glued. Just clarification.
My annual rant, Craig. Thank you.
I I and I agree with more money.
Okay. Any other Supervisor Bramer?
Thank you. I do have a couple I wanted to mention, but could I ask for a refusal on that? It doesn't necessarily need to be a roll call if I can just note recusal on seven oh four, seven thirty-seven, and seven fifty-five.
Supervisor Thomas.
I, yes, I'd like a roll call on resolution eight oh eight.
Eight oh eight is the. That's what we asked. The domestic terrorism.
Also for.
Okay.
Let me ask.
All right. Any other Supervisor Jurassic?
Very briefly, I believe it's new resolution number eight twelve for. For resolution four. This is reference to OCT tax funding. Yesterday Supervisor Driscoll, myself, and I believe Supervisor Bramer, we have seen. A briefing, an overview by Lake George TV and a review product. Materials that they have produced. This is the events of them. We see the. Anything whatsoever. And the product is of exceptional quality that I'm sure the audience will be very proud of. And it highlights and will highlight and feature each one of our communities. You just heard about the need to highlight more than one community. There's already placeholders and therefore already some things are listed in there. Bottom line is for support of this eight twelve. It is extremely high quality and I think Lake George TV specifically at Lark and Jesse Jackson. Should be committed for their dedicated efforts upfront of receiving one dollar. And all of us are going to be the main fisheries of this product.
Thank you. Any other discussion on resolutions? Supervisor McGowan.
Yes, I would just like to comment my colleague from Horicon that. You know, after reviewing and and being to the meetings, this is really encouraging. Coming that the North Country, this is a good way to expose more of the North Country and I I stand behind. This resolution. So thank you.
Any other discussions on resolutions? Supervisor Bramer.
Thank you. On the resolution about the Salvation Army, I had. Moved this forward in committee in health services. And at the time I had asked for the resolution to be clear that we would not be firing any of our employees who would be losing their roles at the Cedar site. I know that the written resolution does not indicate that we have four employees at Cedars. My understanding is that two, there are two open positions at other meal sites. And so we would have two two employees potentially to find a place for, and I understand that HR is working on that. But at this time, I would like to make an amendment to seven oh eight to be sure that the resolution clearly states that we will not be. Terminating our four employees at the Cedar site.
Looks like that.
Is that an informal motion?
Yes.
Do we have a second? Supervisors. Discussion. Supervisor Dixon.
What's so what are you going to do with the two employees?
Because I am not the chair of that committee. If you want me to.
Well, you must have somebody where you're going. You got four employees. You got two vacancies. What happens to the other two?
The question came of.
I wasn't at that meeting when that was all discussed. I'm sorry, I was.
Major Lloyd has has indicated, I think during a presentation that the salary range for any employees that would be brought on. Was actually more than our Office for the Aging or Warren County is currently playing those employees. So it's it's. Desire to to certainly give consideration to those individuals. Benefit package is also very attractive, what I have read. Again, working to to ensure that those people don't. Go without jobs. Yeah, that's that. That's what he said. Each individual that would be impacted. They would work diligently to, you know, ensure that no one lost their job.
Thank you.
Thanks. Supervisor Bramer.
Can I just follow up on that? Chairman, the same one.
All right. What resolution then?
This is seven oh eight.
Okay.
And the reason I'm asking for the amendment is just to be sure that we have a place for these employees because we don't know. The Salvation Army will definitely take them. I hope that they will be able to do that. And I have been pursuing this diligently behind the scenes with our Director of Office of the Aging. Trying to get information about this. I followed up with the HR. I also followed up with the. Office of workforce, WISA, WISA, Osendorf. Anyway, there's two openings in the other sites, so they'll be able to go there. There's two there. And then. My understanding is that Deep Park has indicated that the other two people can be floaters. That they will be needed as substitutes throughout the county at the other sites. So there will be a spot for them.
So we had discussion. We have a motion on the floor to amend the resolution.
Can we can we state what the amendment specifically is going to state, just so it's very clear on the record what we're voting on?
I stated this committee and I'll say it again, so that none of the Cedars employees who are currently employed will lose their county employment. There's four of them.
Right, that's a amendment.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, all right, let's vote on the amendment. Sorry.
You know, I understand the spirit and would you love the amendment? It's the wording of the amendment. That has me a little concerned relative to employers. Need to on occasion have terminate employees for any of a number of different reasons. And I worry about a resolution that says that any particular employee cannot be terminated by the county. If that's the language that I'm concerned with that language and perhaps you could help us.
If I could just recommend as a tweak on that amendment, that it would be that. No current county employees. Assigned to work at Cedars. Will lose county employment. As a result of this contract. There could be other reasons they lose their employment, but it will not be as a result of the county entering into this contract.
Sounds good.
That surprise Supervisor.
That is what I am intending.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to amend the resolution. Does anybody, any other discussion?
Right, because it can get down into the particular. So then what other position would they take? What? Okay. And now.
None of that would be part of this resolution. My legal recommendation is that it just state. What I just stated, which is no current county employees working at Cedars would lose their county employment. Due to or as a result of this contract. This contract being the resolution that this is amending.
My my question was, so they have a position title.
You know.
Okay.
Supervisor Bramer, do you know what titles are?
I don't. I believe they're meal cooks. There's a meal cook and a meal site worker. I don't know what the titles are, Craig. Or my colleague from Chestnut.
Okay, we have a motion Supervisor.
I I hate to labor this, but I think I just asked a question. So. The Salvation Army offers them the position and they decline the position. Is this resolution saying at that point that that we can't terminate them?
That would be my legal opinion on the amendment that's been offered.
It would seem to me, I understand the spirit of what you're offering. You're saying is that you you said. That well, we can't govern what Salvation Army may or not do relative to the employees. It would seem to me that if they're offered. The position with Salvation Army and they decline it, this provision should not apply. Otherwise, what we're putting in a position that.
Good point.
It really is. It really doesn't matter whether the rock or I'm just responding to what you said. I mean, is there some way we could, you know, I mean.
You need to. I don't, you know.
Can I respond to that?
But if that's not a concern, well, okay, but.
You want to reach out to back what the positions are. Supervisor Bramer.
I I understand what my colleague from Bolton is saying about there. There would then be an opportunity for the employee to have another job. However, my concern is that they have a county job and these are important. Sometimes to people to have the benefits of a county job. And so I'm asking for the resolution to state as our county attorney had already. Put it out so eloquently. I I wouldn't want to further limited it, limit it. As was suggested.
Right.
Yeah, well, then then. The comment that well, we can't control whether Salvation Army will or will not offer them a job or whatever that. That that really is not the question. The question, the concern is that we make every effort to try to. Keep them in our family of county government. If that's what they choose.
Yeah, if that's what they choose. Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to amend. Let's we'll do a vote. Roll call voter. For voice vote. Voice. All those favor to amend the motion signify by saying aye. Pose. Hey. One opposed. Did I hear one opposed?
Yeah.
Want to post. Okay. All right, that one stuck. Any other discussion on resolution Supervisor Jurassic?
Just a request to table resolution number seven thirty-four, returning to Criminal Justice Public Safety Committee for further discussion. Seven thirty-four.
Second, we need a motion and.
Yep.
Yep. The motion by Supervisor Assi, second by Supervisor Dickinson, and table seven thirty-four. All those in favor. Pose. Seven thirty-four stable, sent back to committee.
Okay.
Any other Supervisor Bramer?
Thank you very much. While this isn't now on the resolution list because we didn't pass a floor resolution, I just want to say. Quickly that I am very disappointed that we are not passing the video conferencing while at least putting it out for a public hearing. That was all this was to do. And I find it really disrespectful to each other that we would not afford one another this opportunity. When many of us are on boards that have already passed this resolution to allow one another to participate. By video conference under extraordinary circumstances. And I will know. Although I didn't before and I probably should have. This was the resolution drafted by our own county attorney. So, thank you. I have to leave as well.
Thank you. Any other Supervisor Thomas?
Yes, I would like to address a resolution eight oh eight. I believe that this domestic terrorism plan, I I think that this is a step too far. I think a criminal is a criminal. I think that, you know, if a person commits a crime, no matter what kind of crime it is, they need to be speedily prosecuted and and punished for that crime. I think we have red flag laws. I think to start labeling people domestic terrorists. I I think is is too far as we've seen evidence of that with our federal government. Calling parents domestic terrorists. Our Justice Department. So that that's my reasoning and that's why I will now vote for this domestic terrorism.
Yeah, they referenced it already. Just realize that that's a draft. It's not the the final version. So there'll be much more discussion on that. We have to. Something to the United States Department of Homeland Security and our emergency service director has requested. That we at least support this draft. It's adopting the draft version. Obviously, that can be modified.
Thank you. Any other discussion or resolutions? Okay, let's vote on any anybody from the public wish to discuss any resolutions. Okay, let's vote on resolutions.
Can I just ask one?
Yes.
I forgot to mention, there are a number of finance roll calls. Is there any objection to combining those into one roll call vote? Would be specifically. Seven fifty-seven, seven fifty-nine, seven sixty-one, seven sixty-four. Seven sixty-six through seven seventy-five and seven seventy-seven. They're all listed under finance. They're appropriating funds, increasing capital projects.
Need a motion.
You don't need a motion, just to convince.
Yes, everybody okay with that? Okay, all right, let's get started then.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, seven sixty-eight. I'm sorry, six seventy-eight, making supplemental appropriations. Mr. Leggett.
Yes.
Mr. Diamond.
Yeah.
Mr. McDevitt.
Yes.
Mr. Bruno.
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll.
Yes.
Mrs. Frazier.
Yes.
Mr. Girasi.
Yes.
Mr. Dickinson.
Yes.
Mr. Merlino.
Yes.
Mr. Straugh.
Yes.
Mr. McGowan.
Yeah.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Mr. Conover.
Yes.
Chairman Garrity.
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution six seventy-nine authorizing Warren County, amending Warren County budget for two thousand and twenty-two. Mr. Leggett.
Yes.
Mr. Diamond.
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt.
Yes.
Mr. Bruno.
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll.
Yes.
Mrs. Frazier. Yes. Mr. Girasi.
Yes.
Mr. Dickinson.
Yeah.
Mr. Merlino.
Yes.
Mr. Straugh.
Yeah.
Mr. McGowan.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Mr. Conover.
Yes.
Chairman Garrity.
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution six eighty, authorizing ARPA funds dispersment to Jenna Brand DBA J Labs Child Care Center. Mr. Leggett.
Yes.
Mr. Diamond.
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt.
Yes.
Mr. Bruno.
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll.
Yes.
Mrs. Frazier. Yes. Mr. Girasi.
Yes.
Mr. Dickinson.
Yes.
Mr. Merlino.
Yes.
Mr. Straugh.
Yes.
Mr. McGowan.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Mr. Conover.
Yes.
Chairman Garrity.
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution six eighty-one, authorizing ARPA funds dispersment to the city of Glens Falls. Mr. Leggett.
Yes.
Mr. Diamond.
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt.
Yes.
Mr. Bruno.
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll.
Yes.
Mrs. Frazier.
Yes.
Mr. Girasi.
Yes.
Mr. Dickinson.
No.
Mr. Merlino.
Yes.
Mr. Straugh.
Yes.
Mr. McGowan.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Mr. Conover.
Yes.
Chairman Garrity.
Yes.
Resolution passes with five hundred and seventy-five votes in favor. Resolution six eighty-two, authorizing ARPA funds dispersment to Breakland, Brant Lake Foundation. Mr. Leggett.
Yes.
Mr. Diamond.
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt.
Yes.
Mr. Bruno.
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll.
Yes.
Mrs. Frazier. Yes. Mr. Girasi.
Yes.
Mr. Dickinson.
Yes.
Mr. Merlino.
Yes.
Mr. Straugh.
Yes.
Mr. McGowan.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Mr. Conover.
Yes.
Chairman Garrity.
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution six eighty-three, authorizing ARPA funds dispersment through the Economic Development Corporation. This one's for housing shortage shortage. Mr. Leggett.
Yes.
Mr. Diamond.
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt.
Yes.
Mr. Bruno.
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll.
Yes.
Mrs. Frazier.
Yes.
Mr. Girasi.
Yes.
Mr. Dickinson.
Yeah.
Mr. Merlino.
Yes.
Mr. Straugh.
Yeah.
Mr. McGowan.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Mr. Conover.
Yes.
Chairman Garrity.
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution six eighty-four, authorizing ARPA dispersment to Economic Development Corporation for broadband mapping. Mr. Leggett.
Yes.
Mr. Diamond.
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt.
Yes.
Mr. Bruno.
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll.
Yes.
Mrs. Frazier.
Yes.
Mr. Girasi.
Yes.
Mr. Dickinson.
Yes.
Mr. Merlino.
Yes.
Mr. Straugh.
Yeah.
Mr. McGowan.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Mr. Conover.
Yes.
Chairman Garrity.
I'm going to vote yes on this, but I I was say to all my colleagues in the room, please work within your towns to make sure you review these maps. And make sure that all all your streets are showing up on the maps because this is important and this is part of what they want to do with this funds. It's it's the last mile that that still is not getting getting broadband. So I asked, you know, I I fully support this, but I just remind everybody. Really go to the planning department and get the maps and and study on to make sure that each street in your community is has the is on the map or. It's not on the map. It's not on the map. Make sure. LDC or EDC understands that. So I vote yes.
Okay, that resolution passes.
Yeah.
Resolution six eighty-five, authorizing ARPA funds dispersment to Glens Falls Hospital.[1720.83] Mister Leggett?
Yes.
Mister Diamond?
Yes.
Mister McDevitt?
Yes.
Mister Bruno?
Yes.
Mister Driscoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Frazier?
Yes.
Mister Drossy?
Yes.
Mister Dickinson?
Yes.
Mister Marlino?
Yes.
Mister Straugh?
Yeah.
Mister McGowan?
Yes.
Mister Thomas?
Yes.
Mister Conover?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution six eighty-six, authorizing ARPA funds dispersment to Warren County Soil and Water. Uh this is for a weather station in Warren County. Mister Leggett?
Yes.
Mister Diamond?
Yes.
Mister McDevitt?
Yes.
Mister Bruno?
Yes.
Mister Driscoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Frazier?
Yes.
Mister Drossy?
Yes.
Mister Dickinson?
Yes.
Mister Marlino?
Yes.
Mister Stumpf?
Yeah.
Mister McGowan?
Yes.
Mister Thomas?
Yes.
Mister Conover?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution six eighty-seven, authorizing ARPA funds dispersment to soil and water for lake uh sampling monitoring units for two lakes in Warren County. Mister Leggett?
Yeah.
Mister Diamond?
Yes.
Mister McDevitt?
Yes.
Mister Bruno?
Yes.
Mister Driscoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Frazier?
Yes.
Mister Drossy?
Yes.
Mister Dickinson?
Yeah.
Mister Marlino?
Yes.
Mister Straugh?
Yeah.
Mister McGowan?
Yes.
Mister Thomas?
Yes.
Miss um oh Mister Conover?
Yeah.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution six eighty-eight, authorizing ARPA funds dispersment to the Research Foundation for SUNY. Mister Leggett?
Yes.
Mister Diamond?
Yes.
Mister McDevitt?
Yes.
Mister Bruno?
Yes.
Mister Drisc-
Yes.
Mrs. Frazier?
Yes.
Mister Drossy?
Yes.
Mister Dickinson?
Yes.
Mister Marlino?
Yes.
Mister Straugh?
Yes.
Mister McGowan?
Yes.
Mister Thomas?
Yes.
Mister Conover?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution six eighty-nine, authorizing ARPA funds dispersment to Tri-County United Way. Mister Leggett? Mister Diamond?
Yes.
Mister McDevitt?
Yes.
Mister Bruno?
Yes.
Mister Driscoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Frazier?
Yes.
Mister Drossy?
Yes.
Mister Dickinson?
Yes.
Mister Marlino?
Yes.
Mister Straugh?
Yeah.
Mister McGowan?
Yes.
Mister Thomas?
Yes.
Mister Conover?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution six ninety, authorizing ARPA funds dispersment to the VFW. Mister Leggett?
Yes.
Mister Diamond?
Yes.
Mister McDevitt?
Yes.
Mister Bruno?
Yes.
Mister Driscoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Frazier?
Yeah.
Mister Drossy?
Yes.
Mister Dickinson?
Yeah.
Mister Marlino?
Yes.
Mister Straugh?
Yeah.
Mister McGowan?
Yes.
Mister Thomas?
Yes.
Mister Conover?
Yeah.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes.